Okay. It is Monday, May nineteenth, seven o'clock, and I will call the meeting order. First item on the agenda is that we have to add one item of discussion about a resource sharing policy to the agenda, so I made a motion to approve that.
I'd make a motion to add an agenda item of a resource sharing policy at item eleven dot one after our executive session.
Second.
This is a motion made by Matt and seconded by Sunkia to add the resource sharing policy discussion at eleven point one. All those in favor, signal five or say nine.
Aye.
Next on the agenda at the minutes of the previous meeting, I made a motion to approve.
Make a motion to approve.
The additions, please let me.
Make a motion to approve the last meeting minutes.
Second. Motion made by Jamie and seconded by Glenn to approve the minutes of the previous meeting. All those in favor, signal five or say nine.
Aye.
Alright, the next item is public comment, and if there's anybody here to or on the Zoom call to address public comments not already on the agenda, now is the time to speak up. Anyone?
We're in other than very.
There you go, that makes sense.
Yeah, yes.
Yep. Okay, hearing none, I will move on. Number five is public comments. There's a couple of project updates, or I'm sorry.
Highway.
Highway, number five, couple of project updates and dead tree on Red Mountain Road.
Yeah, um, so, um, as most of you will have seen, the highway crew has been working on fixing that culvert that runs over East Darlington Road and the machine, the big machine is having difficulties and someone's come and looked at it and they need parts and so I don't know exactly what's going on with that, but it's not yet resolved. But Mark, it's got the site closed up before it raining, so they'll proceed to fix that up as they can. And my understanding is that, and anybody else can correct me if I'm wrong, is that they have maybe completed the lumber growth of replacements.
They have culvert and they were, they were top, they were top dressing a little bit more today, I think towards the end of the day.
Yeah, so that's, that's really good. The Red Mountain Road dead tree, this is a dead tree that's, um, I'm not sure exactly where you are, it might be across the street, yeah, it's got, it's got a little belt around it. Um, and Mark says that he thought he had somebody to do that last year and they just never did it. They agreed to do and they just never did it. So, um, and I would agree that it is a hazard, um, and so I did go and look at the cemetery trees too today. And once again, I would agree that the big one is a hazard and I didn't see any other dead trees around the cemetery that seemed to me dragging mine, not a tree warden, you know, but I didn't see any other imminent things. So it seemed to me that, um, it might make sense to go ahead and get those three trees.
Is that the West Darlington Cemetery?
The West Darlington Cemetery, and those also have little tags on it. They're right, um, next to that little street, um, right next to one of the exits or entrances to the cemetery, so they're very visible. Um, and I don't think, like, if they fell towards the gray stones, there are other branches of other trees in the way, so it might be broken, you know, the fall might be broken, but it certainly could, if it, if the top of it snapped off, it certainly could knock over some stones, yeah.
And that tree on Red Mountain drops branches regularly.
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah, it's just like shedding itself, yeah.
Years ago, there was another tree kind of in that line, but closer to my driveway than when Keith was on the board that he removed. And that tree looked perfectly fine, and he was like, no, that tree has to go. And we're like, no, it looks perfectly fine, and when they cut it down, it was not perfectly fine. So Keith had a really, you know, he's got a really good eye for that.
Oh, yeah.
And that other, the tree that's tagged now is constantly dropping big branches in the roadway, because I'll clean them out.
Yep.
Then probably moves them in the morning when he comes up on Fridays.
Because just from Sunderland, just got right across the street from me, it was probably right on the line. It got down to about the six foot mark and it was completely.
Right, and you're like, and you're like, how is it still standing up?
Well, it always stand because it's hung in the tree next to it, and they didn't see.
Widowmaker.
Yeah, and I think those trees have been, those are really old trees.
Oh, yeah, and maples, maple, I think they're maples and they'll hang on for a long time, but once they go, they go.
Yeah.
So, um, I will double back to Natalie and make sure that's okay. I can't tell you exactly when it might happen, but I'll try to, to move ahead with it. Um, the other.
Probably be a lot easier if you get somebody to come for three than the one, but.
You never know, you never know, given how busy people are, but we'll find out, we'll find out. And, um, if anybody finds any more trees, we can, we can group them all together. Um, the other thing is that we, um, I'm jumping ahead a little bit, um, but I did meet with Mark at the highway about the energy efficiency program and I met with the consultant. So, um, I am trying to answer all her, her questions and his questions and that kind of stuff, so we'll try and see if we can move ahead with that. Um, jumping down to my report, um, on Dunham Road, um, Mr. Wilkinson has requested perhaps yet again to move the twenty-five mile an hour speed limit sign because he feels that if it was further north on the road before his property, people would have a chance to slow down by the time they're next to his property. So I went there today and I'm not convinced that how many people are affected by speed, speed limit signs, but I gotta tell you, there's only coming south, there's only one speed limit sign right at the Sunderland Garage, and it's actually linked with a weight limit sign and it's actually sometimes blocked by highway trucks and things like that. So someone would come all that way and they'd never see any speed limit sign at all. So, um, if it can be done without too much trouble, I would like to ask the highway guys to just shift that sign. Um, the, the, the town line is here and it goes like this, so it would be diagonally north. This is the, the speed signs over there, so it would be diagonally north up there. Um, I would like to ask them to do that. It may not make any difference, but, um, you know, as somebody that lives on a twenty-five mile an hour road, or at least my family has property, it, it's like, people do not go twenty-five miles an hour, so.
Does that cause any cascading issues with distances between the signs? Because isn't there a regulatory requirement that
That I don't know.
Signs of certain speeds have to be a certain distance apart.
We'll have to check.
Do you know what I mean though, like, a thirty-five mile an hour sign has to be so many.
But they're both twenty-five.
I understand, but I think they have to be. It may make a difference on.
But, but it's different towns.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Because I would think that a town would have the right to put their speed limit.
They can put it wherever they want.
You can put them, but I think there's some law about the distances between those.
Okay, that may have been, that may have been why it never happened, I don't know.
I just, I don't, I don't care either way if we move it, but I just, that's the one thing to be conscious about, right? Because they are supposed to be a certain.
Okay, good.
They may not, maybe that road isn't, maybe it's only state highways that are, that applies to, I don't know.
I, I, I don't know, so that's a really good.
Todd Masiri can probably answer the question.
I know on River Road, they're a long ways away, long ways between.
It may, maybe it doesn't make a difference on the road.
I don't think there's an actual.
I think it boils down to whoever's used to following the speed limits, follows them and whoever isn't, they just.
I honestly don't think moving the sign is gonna do a.
I don't think so either, but.
But the fact of the matter is that, that size people, you know, because there's a kind of long stretch where there's sort of nothing except the swamp and someone could, could, um, build up ahead of steam. And then if they saw the twenty-five mile an hour sign, if they were the kind of person that obeys those things, they might have a chance to slow down before they get, you know, to where there are more people going on. I, I don't know, I don't know. But I'll try to check into the distance question and, um, and if I can resolve that, I'll talk to Mark about doing that. Then the one other thing that I want to raise in terms of the future, we're not gonna do anything about it today. Um, some of you may recall that there's a problem with the drainage with water pounding on Royal Road near, um, it's almost to, what would be Old West Road, it's Bobby Young's property. And, um, so I was up there today to look at it and, and there's a lot of water there. Um, and my understanding is that there's a town culvert under the road that a previous property owner extended under his lawn. And so there may be a blockage under the road, there may be a blockage under the lawn. And when the landowner did that, they did not have a permit or work with the town, they just did it because they just wanted their lawn and not water, you know, drainage or something. So, um, there's a bunch of different things we could do, but we in fact have a culvert under that road and it's probably been there for fifty years, so chances are, we need a new culvert there. And whether we daylight it or whether we say, we'll put it into your culvert, but you've got to maintain it, or whatever we do, we shouldn't have a situation where because of the past actions of a landowner, another, you know, there's, it's water coming off of the mountain and it needs to go get back into the drainage system of the creeps. So, um, so I went and looked at it, I can go look at it with Mark. Um, this Nick looked at it and he didn't want to do anything, and so there may be reasons for not doing things that, um, I'm not aware of. Um, so I will check with Nick and I'll check with Mark and we'll see.
I did talk with Nick because water came to me as well.
Okay.
Um, Nick said nothing can happen until the couple of truckloads of material on her lawn get ditched out, which the town can't do because it's a purely private drainage concern. Um, that was his.
With a couple of.
Been looking at it because it's over a hundred feet in length, that culvert going out across that lawn.
Yeah, I get that, I get that.
We dug it up once.
The culvert?
Over the, well, the catch basin right in the middle of their driveway. And we dug it up, come back when I was with the town, and then it go all the way across the property, but they wouldn't give it to right of way to do anything other than that. There's no other place for the water to go.
Did you replace the culvert?
No, so the culvert on the road was good at the time.
Okay.
When it comes to this catch basin and then it goes out.
So the catch basin could be blocked or.
Yeah, the catch basin, yeah.
It's, it's very, it's very long.
Oh, no, I know that, I know that, because they're.
And it's all, it's all private property.
No, no, I know that, I know that, it's just that.
Drainage from the house that comes in the front, I mean, it's, it was a surprise when we dug into it, but we couldn't get any right of way to say that you can go all the way across the property.
Okay, but then the, the other options are to do something on the near side in terms of creating a ditch and trying to move the water down that way, and I don't know if there's ledge there or.
There is ledge there because they have a problem greating, they catch the ledge when they're greating.
On the other side of Bob's driveway, you're gonna.
You run into it tremendously.
That, the downhill side.
Downhill side.
Yeah, on the downhill side.
The east side, okay, okay.
Yeah.
Um, well, you know, and I remembered some of this, you know, and I knew there was reasons, but I don't think it's really, um, I don't think it's really an acceptable situation and, and, uh.
You might be able to go talk to the landlord now and might be able to get permission, you know what I mean? To go across there, it's just like that time.
Right, 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 okay, okay, so, um, to be continued. But I just wanted to raise it and I really appreciate, um, all of those comments, that's very, very helpful. And so to be continued, we'll come back to that. Okay, so, um, anything else about highway, you mean?
No, I know, Mark, you, you talked about the excavator.
Yeah.
And he had some initial prices, which were about thirty-six hundred dollars for repair.
For fixing it, yeah.
So, um, I think you've got the authority to approve that, I think, if it comes through.
Yeah, I mean, we gotta, gotta fix it.
It's gotta get fixed, it's sitting on the guy's yard.
Doorstop, you know. No, gotta fix, gotta fix that for sure. Um, okay, so that's highway.
So on the red, now we'll move down to old business, Glee Block Road, I don't know if there's any updates on that.
Um, well, we have the gardeners here again, and I did correspond with the representatives of Red Mountain LLC. I have the maps and I have the survey, isn't somebody?
No, I mean.
Um, and my understanding is that somebody from that firm may have been in the clerk's office today, but I don't know for sure. I did send them.
What'd you do, Matt?
You can hit the mic button.
I did, I did send the, um, that firm, the map that we based our decisions in two thousand and seven on, and Robin even has the facility now to scan in the full survey and turn it into a file that can be emailed, which is amazing. They're not posted, they're not gonna be posted, but she, they have the machine now and she has learned how to do it. So they have that survey, which of course we didn't have when we were making our decisions, but it totally supports everything that we decided, because obviously we decided based on what the deeds say, because Mr. Wright drew it where we put it, based on what the deeds say, so, you know, it's, it's ex post facto, but it supports what we did. So I sent all that stuff to them, um, and they didn't, you know, they're not, they're not here, they're not trying to come in, so I don't think we have anything else to do. But I will say that down.
Follow that, okay?
Yeah, so down in seven-two, the proposed road name change is actually the gardeners asking to name the, to change the name of Glee Block Road, the private road, Glee Block Road, quote-unquote, to Kelly Lane, is that right? It would be a private road, but it would be Kelly Lane.
We want to get rid of the confusion.
Yeah, no, I mean, no. And I, um, I do have, I do have an, in, the, uh, what do you call it? The statute, the government changing roads, and we only can do that, we have to have formal hearing, goes to us, goes to us. And we have to have a hearing and then if we change a road, it has to be registered in all kinds of different places. And the town clerk and Joe Nash, the lighting supervisor, will do that with the state and with the fire department and with everybody, everybody, so. But I think my concern was that I did not know what the board would be consider, I mean, the gardeners have proposed this, but I didn't know if we should ask for a letter signed from all of the residents on the road, I didn't know, and I don't know.
We've talked to, uh, I talked to Scott. I talked to Scott Lang and she talked to Josh.
Julia, okay.
They all agreed.
And they all think Kelly Lee.
If you want a signed thing, I can get it.
No, I, I mean, it, it depends on what the board wants, I just didn't want to proceed with anything without consulting the board.
It's actually Scott's daughter.
Oh, yeah, Kelly, sure, sure, yeah, cute.
My only question would be, and I don't, I can't think of any, but check with Robin.
Is there another Kelly Lane?
Is there another Kelly Lane in town? I can't think of any that are there, but that would be the only.
I believe there is.
No.
Nine-one-one, nine-one-one system would.
No.
If there was, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I took the ride around trying to see if there was any names, you guys know.
I, I don't recall it being another Kelly Lane.
No, there's not.
I don't see a problem with it.
Okay, so the fire department guys, we don't, you know, we're not, there's probably not one.
Yeah, there's nothing. York Main, Waylon Meadows, Littleton, New Hampshire. Twenty, thirty years experience.
Thirty-five years of driving these roads, I know.
I just.
So, Dan, would you like to schedule the hearing?
Why don't we just schedule it for next meeting?
Okay.
Yep. Because we have more. Yeah, then, you're clear.
Okay, okay, now when we, when we warn it, would we send letters to the neighbors anyway?
Yeah, they'd have to go to all of the interested parties, party of interest.
Everybody, you know, all the interested parties, in case they were coming with you.
Okay, right, okay.
And given, yeah, I, I asked Scott the other day when I talked to him, that I mentioned that this meeting was mine. And he said that he probably wouldn't be able to make it, and I guess the girl is in soccer and all.
Yeah, he does a lot of sports.
Yeah.
Okay, well then we'll proceed along with that and, um, I'll let, um, Robin and Joe know so they can, and I do have the, the statute, so I can go ahead with that.
Yeah.
Okay.
You just follow that process because, yeah, there's a few steps, but it's pretty simple.
You just did one, Don't Run Lane got changed.
Yeah, last, last summer we did, the Salmaner.
That's right, I remember that, yeah.
Completely changed the little across from Jerry Bar a few years ago, too.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, so it's not a big deal.
It's, it's.
So it would be the next meeting?
Yeah.
It'll be the next meeting, which will be June second.
Thank you. You're welcome.
So we can get out of your hair.
Yeah, yeah, you're, you're welcome.
You can stay for all of the wonderful action.
Stay a little bit longer, I enjoy it.
So, item six point two, next on the agenda is the Arlington Red Park project updates.
Yeah, I have no. Okay, so, um, I didn't get a chance to do my emails, but when I met with Mark, um, he knows it about the project of putting up the pole, and he said that he wanted, um, the place where the pole is supposed to go marked in white paint and the path, what would it be, the path of the.
The ditch.
The ditch, the ditch, where, marked in white paint, and he wants somebody to call Dig Safe. So, um, I am going to send an email to Willie, asking him to do those things.
He should be able to do all of them.
And I myself have called Dig Safe, so theoretically I could do it if I had to, but he's down there with the phone numbers and everything, so I'd like to have him have a chance to do that. And then, and then once that's done.
He shouldn't get too long to do that.
Yeah, yeah, no, he wants to get this done, we all want to get this done. And, um, and once that's done, then Mark can schedule going down there and doing that work. So that's where that, that is as far as I know. Um, and another thing about the park is that I've been contacted by Jacob Fetterman, who's with the Tread Unlimited people, you know, they're doing that culvert over in Murray Hollow, and they're gonna be doing a back hill river cleanup, um, the weekend of June twenty-eighth. And they want to have a casella dumpster at the park, in the parking area, um, which they've done before, so that all the trash can be put in the dumpster. And my one, first of all, I didn't know if that was somebody that should have a permit or, or not. Um, and I didn't, I think that's the weekend of the duck dirty. Um, and so, um, you know, having, having a dumpster in one corner of the parking lot doesn't necessarily create a problem. I told him, people may put their trash.
Would they want one three thirteen?
I don't know if you want to put a dumpster in that parking lot.
I don't think.
Coming in.
Couldn't we put the dumpster back by the garage, someplace somewhere? There's like some room on the side there, right?
Get, get it out of the parking area?
Yeah, I mean, it'd also be less have to have.
Uh, I think if you go to the right, as you're facing the building, as you go right, there used to be some shit back there, I think it tore was down to.
Right, there's room.
Right of the back.
Right next to the other small dumpsters is where.
Yeah, there's room right there.
Before the first building.
Right in before the first building.
You turn around right now, that would be.
Big truck could back it in and put it down.
Right there and.
But the twenty-eight, isn't that, when is the cemetery?
Twenty-nine.
I thought that was Sunday, the twenty-ninth.
Okay, just thinking of all the stuff going on in that weekend already.
So, pretty, pretty packed, pretty.
There, there is a lot. I don't know that these, I, I don't know, um, I mean, I'll, I'll ask him more about, um, I mean, he's, I don't think, I think some of them may be parking there, or they could certainly park in the, the other access point and they're gonna be floating the river and collecting trash and they're getting picked up and coming back. I mean, so it's not like crowds of people, you know, yeah.
Back up in there and throw it in the dumpster and then they can pick it up on the twenty-nine or whatever.
But I'm gonna, I'm gonna check with Willie about it, um, but I think what you say is a, a good idea. Okay, so that is, and we've already done the dead trees, so they're, they're still dead.
I hope so. Sorry, just talking about the pole there. Good night, you guys.
Night.
Nice evening. How far out do you think it'd be for said pole to go up and to get that finished? Because if Mark's gonna go down there, just in my mind, and doing concrete down there for Willie, um, if Mark's gonna prep that for me, would it just make sense to have him do all that? Or ask him to do all that while he's there? Also, instead of doing that prep for the pole and then do, come back later on and prep? Because that's something I'd like to get done in, by, in mid-July would be ideal.
I don't know what.
I mean, we got summertime right now, so it stays lighter longer, so the pole being on, light being up, isn't huge right yet.
Right, but you're gonna want to grow it back in and stuff for.
Well, it's gonna be.
There is for.
It's gonna be inside in the bark area.
Right.
It'll be inside in the bark area, so the bark has got to get moved to the side, dig the ditch, and then cover it all back over with bark after.
That's why we haven't really continued that boundary, right?
He's got most of it done.
Yeah.
Most of it.
I noticed that the other day, this, it was looking pretty good, and he's just had a few more.
Randy wanted that all in place so that he knew that one of those three-foot rods wasn't gonna get driven right down through the conduit. At least now he can go around it, and so he's all set with that. Um, but Willie was putting more of that in today.
Well, I mean, I can have a meeting with Mark too, if he minds going there for that and then coming back.
The, the only issue is if we want him to do that at the same time, um, that's up to the board and, but we should be, it should be very specified what he has to do, you know, and all that kind of stuff. But I think that one problem that he has had in the past is sometimes if he is gonna go help somebody, whoever it is, is you get down to the park and then you don't just do A, you do B, C, D, and then you never go back to the brush, yeah. You're doing exactly, but at least you're asking the board so that we could let Mark know ahead of time, because Mark has to manage his time, and so I think that, I think that, um, I think that, that, uh, I think the, the rhythm of how things go, you know, in the spring grading and then in the summer, sometimes there isn't that much going on, but then guys take vacations, you know, so, but I think that if you want to talk to him about it and what you need done, so that he can have a sense of what it might, um, might take. But what I think would be good is if we could go ahead and get the marking done, so then whenever Mark is available, he can get it done. And then if he can also do your stuff, even better, if not, circle back.
Um, I will have Dig Safe at the school next week, so if we could coordinate and have them hit both.
That'd be.
Tomorrow, they'll probably put it right on the same schedule.
Right, they're, they're about four days out, I called today, so. For our bus.
For the next few minutes, they could, uh, they could help us out in the park too. Doesn't need to work for them.
They would appreciate the coordination.
But if we call tomorrow and say, then probably, you're coming to the school, there's another.
Yeah, yeah.
Three quarters of a mile down the road.
And you might not want to leave that to Willie, although if he's willing to do it tomorrow, that's fine. But you may get hold of them, or make that not.
Is, is it obvious which phone number I should give him?
I don't know.
There's a pole near the playground, that's the problem.
Not really any poles that we've got to deal with, the pole that's going up is, we just need to know that there's nothing in that area where they're going to dig to upset the pole, because that's gotta be six foot deep.
Okay.
And then there's gonna be a foot-deep trench over through.
Okay, so like, if, if I went down there, could I mark it with, I mean, I'm just thinking.
I'll be down there tomorrow.
Because the Dixie person has to know, could you mark it?
Set a state with a ribbon on it.
Check, okay.
Yep, and then he can see, yes, and then he can see the old conduit, he can see the old conduit, he can see the state, and then he can notice it's directly to the building. So, yeah, that's easy enough.
What is the address of the park? Do I need to give them an address? I have to give, I have to give them.
You will leave an address.
Willie's got it.
Okay, all right, I'll be in touch with Willie and if he needs help doing this, I'll, I'll help him do it, okay.
The only other thing on the cemetery is I just wanted to remind everyone that that's Sunday, the twenty-ninth, and they are looking for volunteers. The guy that's coming from, I can't say the organization, but he's, he does this all over the state and he requests volunteers to work, so. Anybody feels the need, they, they'll be wheelbarrow and gravel around, they'll be picking stones up, cleaning them off and resetting them, and he has all of this assessors that needs to do that, but he just needs some manpower.
And the cemetery, um, looks very nice, it's very nice down there, very nice.
One forty-eight Red Park Road.
One forty-eight Red Park Road, you're so good.
Okay.
Not recreation park, Red Park.
Red Park.
All right, come to the next item.
The next item is Town Hall telephone and internet updates.
Got, hand out, sorry, I had to write on them because I adjusted the.
Analog, it's.
I adjusted the numbers based on looking at the current warrants to get the information. So, as everybody remembers, uh, we have talked a couple times about problems with phones here at Town Hall and the network, um, outside access for cloud-based services. So, um, in conjunction with Ian Abel, our IT consultant, our current Town Hall internet is, and actually the speeds at all of our locations run about two fifty, down twenty, up. And they're with Comcast Business, so some of them are relatively expensive per month. Um, so if you look at the top under access, uh, your current MRC or monthly recurring cost on Comcast Business is one thousand one hundred and three oh nine a month, uh, all locations collectively. So what we're doing is we're proposing that we go to Phidium Fiber, which is part of, uh, CCI or Consolidated Communications Incorporated. And we'll go to gig service at Town Hall, so it'll be symmetric, one gig down, one gig up. And we'll go to gig service at Town Hall, so it'll be symmetric, one gig down, one gig up. Uh, we'll put gig service at the two fire halls. And then the town garage and the pump house will do three hundred meg service synchronous, because they're not serving but just a couple clients there. Um, there is static IP for Town Hall, a voice line for the DAC on the fire alarm panel. Uh, both of the fire departments also get a potsline off of the fiber for their DAC as well. So the copper will go away, and our differential savings will be five hundred eighty three oh nine per month. We move down to the next, so basically we're cutting it in half, and we're getting uh, more than a hundred, you know, we're getting what? More than fifty percent faster service at those, most of those, three of those locations. We move down to professional services, uh, this is the estimated professional services cost from Ian Abel. Uh, it is a not to exceed cost. Ron believes that he'll spend about three, no more than three hours. At each site, um, to bring them up in online with the new carrier. I suspect that Town Hall will take three hours. Uh, I would guess that pump house, the two fire departments in the town garage are probably an hour and a half, so this is worst case scenario. Uh, the total of twenty one hundred dollars for professional services. And then our um, internet router, the firewall here at Town Hall does need to be upgraded. To handle the throughput, and that is three hundred eighty dollars. So in our solution total, we've got non-recurring costs for our NRC, which is equipment and professional services, would be a total of two thousand four hundred and eighty dollars. Our monthly recurring cost goes down to uh, five eighty, uh, excuse me, five twenty. Five hundred and twenty even. Uh, will be our MRC, and so our cost savings return on investment is four point two five months. Uh, give or take just a little bit. Life expectancy of this solution, we're gonna estimate at forty eight months. Uh, you will likely get a year or two longer out of it, but for safety. And technology can change very quickly, but I would estimate forty eight months is your life, overall life expectancy. Uh, we're gonna see some costs, uh, soft cost savings as well. What uh, speed and reliability improvements specifically here at Town Hall. And labor efficiency improvements. So we believe that a lot of the problems that we have with some of our cloud-based services, like our financial platform. Could really be related to the slow upload speed that we have here at Town Hall. Uh, and there is a lot of other demands on it, because all of our voice traverses out the circuit, um, you know. Uh, OneDrive, Microsoft Office three sixty five, all of that's cloud-based now, so there's no on-prem services. So we should see some, we'll definitely see speed and reliability improvements. Uh, but that should also equate to some labor efficiency improvements as well for the staff. So I would um, seek a proposal that we move forward with replacing our Comcast business accounts. With the proposed Fidium Fiber through CCI. Um, solution and contract with Ian Abel to complete this. Uh, would be a a not to exceed non-recurring cost of two thousand four hundred and eighty dollars. And then we will see that uh, five hundred eighty three per month savings uh, starting the second part.
Oh, did you make a motion? Did a motion?
Uh, that was what I am seeking a motion for. I was the presenter, so I don't know, so it would be appropriate for me to make the motion as well.
Just shy of a seven thousand dollar a year savings.
Yeah.
And and I, and I think if we can actually realize those savings, it would be wonderful, but the key thing is that. We have to have reliable phone service, and we might have been able to get there with Comcast too, but without as good service and with higher costs.
The one thing that I will note is the internet service here at Town Hall today, it's very, it was installed back. When Adelphia was the franchisee, and it's a free service. And the hundred and one that we're paying is actually for the single copper potsline for our fire alarm DAC. So, I'm gonna talk to Ian Abel, but what I propose is the router that we are putting in here will support two carriers. And so we will leave the old free Comcast service here as a backup. While it's not super robust, it would get you by in a pinch, so. Exactly, so there's a little bit of redundancy that we can build into Town Hall through this solution that won't cost us anything additional.
Okay, I think that is, that is really good because of the fact that the Town Hall in emergencies has to service them.
And it's all of our phones and everything run over these services.
TVs, what your biggest thing was, right?
I have an access down there, yeah.
I am going to buy the fire department two Rokus, and then you will be all set. I will buy those out of my pocket and give them to you so that you have to be serviced, but we are not gonna pay for Comcast television service. That is a waste of money.
Agreed.
So I would make the motion to um, for Matt's proposal to switch to Fidium and to Ian Abel. To install and upgrade our phone and internet access.
Should we put the monetary value in the motion?
Uh, you want them not to exceed for the non-recurring cost.
That was the twenty four eighty.
Yep.
With a not to exceed cost of two thousand four hundred and eighty dollars.
Second.
Motion made by Jamie and Sophia to.
I do not.
Changes as outlined by Mr. Markowski, with all those in favor, sick and heartless, thank you. And you both.
Janet, I'll send you the final um, spreadsheet for your minutes.
Thank you.
All right, so the next thing, the proposed name change, that was the Blue Block Road.
That was the Blue Block Road, yes, um.
I just wanted to make sure I thought it was, but I just. So the next uh, thing, uh, under item seven point three, moving right along. Covered Bridge Week is bad, is that a bad?
Um, could I just mention something else about the Murth Grant, um, cause she did go to the Town Hall, she's also been, she did go to the garage. She's also been in the Town Hall, and so um, she's had to take measurements, cause there's no blueprints for the buildings. There was actually a sketch of that building, but there's, this is such a new building, we don't have any blueprints, so. Um, and I did my best to show her, you know, the boiler room and other kinds of things like that, and Dan, I may have to be in touch with you at some point. About some of the finer points of the building, but um, but uh, I'm gonna, we're gonna try to move move forward with that for both buildings. But the the garage being the most important. Thank you, that's all for that.
All right.
So, yeah, the covered. Yeah, this is, so I have not been able to generate a TA report the way um, Nick did, because I didn't wanna take the time to write up a report. While I'm still just trying to do the stuff, so um, so I I just wanted to let the board know that. I'm trying to put the priority on the grants and activities that Nick highlighted as the most urgent. And I'm trying to get up to speed on all the files and the different programs and reporting and that kind of stuff. Um, and the key thing going on right now is that the. Project about the coronation on South Road is supposed to get started this Thursday, because there was a deadline about starting it. It's not gonna really do anything, it's not gonna get finished for sure, but it's supposed to get started, and they're supposed to have a project meeting there. Um, on Thursday morning, so, and Josh is doing that, Josh has got got that. So, um, so I just wanted you to be aware, be aware of that, um. And then, you know, and I'll just keep on doing those things and consulting you guys, um, when I need to, and I appreciate your patience with me in terms of. Um, answering my questions, because I very much don't wanna make an assumption about something and then turn out to be wrong. So the only other thing here is, um, it turns out that the governor has signed a proclamation that August second to ninth. Is Covered Bridge Week in Vermont. And so the Covered Bridge Society has created banners that say Covered Bridge Week. And they offered one to us, and.
Seven through what?
August second through ninth, yeah. Second through ninth, August of August, no, that's only two days, yeah. Second through ninth, and so um, I don't know what all may be going on, in addition to, maybe they'll film a new, you know. Covered Bridges of Bennington County or something like that, what was it, Covered Bridges of Madison County? I don't know about Clint Eastwood, uh, May- Merrill Street, but I don't know, but.
Bridges of Bennington County.
So, um, so I have ordered a banner, and the invoice will be on the next warrant, because I wanted to check. It's only eighty dollars, but you know, so I could approve it, but again, I wanna check, I don't know, I would assume we'd wanna hang it on the government, the covered bridge. Um.
Put it inside where the big white sign got destroyed. Right on the three thirteen.
People can't really. We can't put it here.
That's what I was thinking, so you know to find it, because they can find.
And and the other thing, the the reason why, I also wanted to check with the board is I was thinking I could contact like Arlington Commons or other groups. And let them know about this, because they might wanna key in some kind of activity about it, they wanna, might wanna order their own banners, you know, it's like.
Yeah.
Um, I don't know what the rules are for stringing something across the state highway, I've never tried it, I can't do it, yeah.
We tried that with the fire department for a carnival.
But you know, but it's it's just, it's just, it's just something to, I mean, people stop, it's so funny, I've been. I've been down at that covered bridge, people stop, get out of their car, take a picture and drive away, it's unbelievable, you know, so.
And then get out and take a picture, and then you're sitting there on three.
Oh, yeah, they totally, I mean, I think it's.
They do the same thing at Chiselville.
It sounds like it's a great, I mean, and that would be a great opportunity.
I mean, there's Chiselville too, I don't know if Sunderland's getting a banner, but and then there is one in Sangat, I think it's a private bridge. But anyway, um, there's certainly some in in Bennington, and and I just really like it, because they only have covered bridges. Because that that was the way they dealt with the snow, right? That's why they have covered bridges. So this was a purely practical, pragmatic solution, and here, you know, three hundred years later, two hundred years later.
Bridges last a lot longer than other types.
Cause they're covered, yeah.
Cause they're covered.
Okay, so we'll go ahead and um, we'll put the invoice on the next um, warrant, and I will try to spread, spread the word about that.
Okay.
Awesome.
Okay. Um. So before we get to the warrants, I just wanna um, ask of of about a future meeting. We've already said that we will probably try to do that hearing for the road name change at the next meeting. We will have someone for B, C, S, W, A, W, C, A. Um, Bennington Solid Waste. Yes, the Bennington Solid Waste Agreement, it has already been approved, but she has to come here and we have to do a signature page. So um, that's what's gonna happen at the next week, and I would actually like to put health insurance on the agenda to discuss. Because um, I think we need to be, we need to start that discussion sooner rather than later. Have some information from Janet, we're about to make a new hire, and we will be hiring them under the current regime. But they need to know that that could change, you know.
Well, we could probably change that as part of the hiring contract.
That's that's, that's up to the board, but I just, I just think that, um, so unless the agenda becomes unwieldy between now and then, I'd like to at least. Look at that.
Yeah.
That issue, um.
That would be good.
We can have a preliminary discussion and then.
And then come back to it.
Thing that we need to go and research, then we can go back and do it next week.
Yeah. And and, and then the other thing for the next meeting is, we don't have another water department meeting until. July twenty eighth. But um, right now, there's um, at least one uh, request for an adjustment of the bill. And there's also, uh, I I talked about doing the signature page from the change in the fees that we did, and I do have that. But when I went over the whole ordinance, the ordinance that we have is out of date in a number of ways, it mentions. Actual, it mentions Key Squire repeatedly, and it mentioned Burrisnow and things like that, and we. I have not been able to find the signature page of that ordinance. Now, that doesn't mean it isn't here, we certainly signed it, but you need the signature page. And there are a couple of other places that need to be adjusted because of the rate changes and other things. So what I would actually like to do at um, a special water board meeting on June second, very short, would be to re-adopt the whole thing. Get it all up to date, I'll make the corrections, re-adopt the whole ordinance, and then Robin, Susan can put it online, and it'll be there, and we'll have the wet signature page. And we'll be all.
Perfect, yep.
So, so my my only question is, do you wanna try to do it at six thirty or seven?
Six thirty.
You want to, but is that?
Or, well, I mean, you could say six forty five, cause it's just a housekeeping, then we're gonna.
But I I think, I think, I mean, I think the question is, people's schedule in terms of work or going home or having supper or whatever. Seven, I think is easier, if we don't have a heavy agenda with the select board.
We could do the seven o'clock for that.
Seven o'clock for that select board immediately, yeah, yeah.
Just warn it that way.
Okay, okay, so I'll warn it that way. All right, I think, and also, um, I didn't hear from any of you about that due process resolution, so I didn't put it anywhere.
I'm good.
Okay, so that's it, so we could do warrants and.
An executive session.
Do you wanna do warrants, or do you wanna do fire department first?
Fire department, truck news, I was trying to block it out.
They're here.
I was trying to block it out, yes, and so that was not on the agenda, because it was too late, but I did send you guys, um, Jamie's, um, Jamie's message.
And I have a big first party room.
And I ordered your two Rokus for the fire department, so when they come in, you can come up to my house.
All right.
Otherwise I'll forget, so.
So, what you have in front of you is, we were uh, changing the tires. From the stunted snows to our regular tires, and the members found the frame looking pretty rusty. Um, and that's the springs were separating, so. I called Jamie and talked to him about it, he contacted you guys, we sent it over to get looked at. Um, when they called back, they said that it's in pretty bad shape, um, as you can read. There's a lot of stuff that is wrong, the radio alarm bush, even the rear end, there's a list. And if you read the last paragraph, it says I was advising the local unit to retire in the truck through the shape of the frame. The rail's red rear, yeah. They did not fix the springs, because it says C job one, so. I called Jamie again when I found out this information on Friday. Um, and asked what we should do, so we brought the truck back home, right now it's still out of service. Um, my opinion is, maybe send it someplace for a second opinion. So that we're not just going after one, um, so we're not in the same boat of what happened with the excursion. Um, so we thought about sending it to a, to a local truck inspection place, you know, somebody just puts a sticker on. Or do we send it to another dealership, where they look at these every day, all day? Um, so we were thinking of maybe sending it over to Westminster, over where Merth's looking to buy the new town truck, and have them. Get a set of eyes on it. Just to make sure what what we're seeing is, what, you know, not what we wanna see, we, I mean.
We wanna make sure.
Back in service, but we wanna. So this guy is not in his notes, but he said you might be able to find somebody. Who would cut away at the frame and patch it in, okay? But the amount of work, he couldn't give me a price, they don't do that type of work there, but you have to pull the body, the pump. All that stuff to do this type of work, I mean, we're looking right now, this truck's gonna within two years be replaced. How much money do we wanna sink into this? I just wanted to make sure that the liability part was, it got checked. Um, cause it was, it is some significant rusting. Um, it's a heavy duty double frame that is separating, um, and everything. So, uh, I just wanted to make sure that it was safe, so we sent it right to a freightliner dealership.
Or did you, did you drive it there?
We did, no, we drove it there, and we drove it back, even though they advised.
And so you'd be able to drive it to Westminster?
Yes.
And what would it cost to get the second thing?
I don't know, this one here, so this has to go to Janet, they said we had an account there, but I didn't see where they charged an account, so if we can check on that. But this was a hundred and sixty dollars. Well, worth a hundred and sixty bucks. You know, it took them an hour and something to do it, so, um. I think it'd be worth scheduling it and taking it over there, and having a dealership look at it. I mean, or if you guys want, I can have somebody local look at it, it's, it's whatever the pleasure of the board is.
I think we should definitely get a second opinion.
I agree. And I don't have a problem sending you over there with that.
I mean.
It's probably somewhat comparable to this, even if it was double.
Yeah.
It's not a big deal. Just so we had two and congru. Just so we had two and can go from there, right?
But we have, but we have, like you say, we have, yeah, if somebody is willing to tackle repair, we have no idea what that would cost. Or how long it would.
No, you said you'd have to find somebody, you know? Now, one thing you can do, which I can tell you they do all the time, but it's gonna be real costly is they re, they'll reframe the whole truck. But that's, you're talking, everything comes out.
Yeah.
And they redove. I mean, that's a lot, a lot of work, a lot, yeah. So, um.
Is there another truck that was down?
There is. There's the one truck that we kept. Um, there's a, there's a big difference in trucks.
Twelve hundred gallons of water versus five hundred gallons of water.
Which, which one is it?
The seven four, the old seven. Pumper seven four, it's twenty-eight, this is two thousand and five. Um, that was the truck that we thought we were gonna get, and kept, which was a good thing. We kept, right? So now that one's in a semi-service. So we get together and figure out, you know, what to put on.
What we have in there today.
We have four hundred and fifty thousand, four hundred and seventy-seven in twenty twenty-eight. But what do we have right now?
Yeah, what do we have today?
It looks like it might be two hundred and fifteen thousand.
Yeah. It's just not in there.
Well, two fifteen and then they put, yeah.
A stock unit right now, Matt, Jamie, we saw it when we went to the New England Chiefs. If you were to buy a stock unit right now, it's seven, right around seven hundred thousand. If, if we were to spec one out and you're talking twenty twenty-seven, they were giving us estimates of what pushing closer to nine hundred. So we're, we're way off. We've said this for years.
So there is the, some government action on the fire pricing right now because they're going after the ref group um to break them up because of the pricing.
Somebody's getting rich.
Very, very.
Well, there's some other ways that we could look at it. I think there could be some too.
Well, we've talked about that for a lot of years.
So it's hard and I don't know.
A stock truck isn't exactly what you want, but you can make it work if you get the right one that's close enough. Um, and you can save a lot of money that way.
And I think that's, I mean, in our position, that's what we're gonna have to do.
We don't have to customize it to go through the bridge, correct?
Depends on the truck.
Yes. Yeah. Or you get a stock truck that fits through the bridge and that's what you have.
Trucks to a hundred and fifteen inches and that goes through. Um, most of our trucks have, we've said one fifteen for Max, they're in around one twelve. So we haven't had a problem other than the box truck.
So the box truck will fit now that we've changed the air conditioner out. But I won't suggest that. Oh, we, we put it through to make sure if we had to go through.
It's like threading a needle.
And it was, it was like threading a needle. But if we got stuck on one side and the other, I wanted to know if it'd go through. So we went up one evening and put it through and it will fit, but I wouldn't suggest taking it through for a fire call. Just if we get trapped someplace, we have a way to get back out. So uh.
Well, I think, I think the first step is to, to go get that second opinion and then.
And I, and I think we're gonna find out that it may not be working. But, but, but let's find out because sometimes you have people that see.
But I just wanted to, you know, get this. I think, they said they had an account, but I don't see where they put it under an account, so. Um, so we'll get that in and then, you know, I'll pass information along either through Jamie or Matt on what the, the second opinion comes up with and we can move on from there.
Okay. Well, other than that, I didn't have any, you guys.
Thanks for your work, guys.
Yeah, thank you.
Are those helmets, everybody wearing them?
Yes.
Like to see everybody with those helmets on.
Actually, they used them in the extrication field the other day and they loved several of them.
That's great. Um, we're gonna do warrants before.
We can do warrants in that executive session or we can do executive session first.
Why don't we do the warrants because there may be outcome from the executive session, but we can just pass the notes to Janet.
Yes.
Okay. Yes. All right. So this um, this water department invoice is a little bit bigger than usual because we are making the bond.
Our annual.
And remember, this is, this is gradually repaying the bond for purchasing the water company and the initial repairs mostly on seven A.
Sections that we're.
Yeah, we did quite a bit on seven A. So. So that um, that is actually a hundred and thirty-five thousand, nine hundred and thirty-three dollars and twenty-two cents. So that's pretty big.
Biggest.
Dwarfs everything else. The other things are of course the health insurance, um chemicals, articric engineering, um and uh, you know, such like things. So I make a motion to approve check warrant report number WD one, being the current invoices for the Arlington Water Department dated. WD ten, WD ten, sorry. It's either one and a, I don't know what I was thinking. I'm trying to think and talk, think about different things that I'm talking about and it's not working. So WD ten dated five sixteen twenty-five, motion to approve total amount a hundred and forty-seven thousand dollars. Hundred forty-seven, three hundred and seventy-three dollars, thousand dollars. I cannot do this. Hundred forty-seven thousand, three hundred and seventy-three dollars and ten cents. It's just so painful to me to have such a big number. I can hardly even.
Second that motion.
By Jamie to approve check warrant report WD ten and the total amount, one hundred and forty-seven thousand, three hundred and seventy-three dollars and ten cents. All those in favor, signify by the same line. And you vote. Motion carried.
Okay, the next one is gonna be the towns invoices. Um, the usual things. We have some highway truck maintenance, six thousand five hundred dollars. The health insurance, nine thousand, Bennington County Regional Commission for the solid waste implementation, three thousand six hundred. Um, Microsoft, three thousand, good heavens. Um, all kinds of stuff like that, gravel. So I make a motion to approve check warrant report number ten dated five sixteen twenty-five for the town of Arlington expenses, motion to approve the amount of forty-three thousand, three hundred and thirty-eight dollars and eighty-eight cents.
Your second? Uh, motion made by Cynthia and second by Jamie to approve checkpoint report number ten. The total amount of twenty-three thousand, three hundred and thirty-eight dollars and eighty-eight cents. All those in favor, signify by the same line.
So I did have all other business down there at the bottom. And so I thought that if we have anything coming out of the executive session, that would really be the all other business or whatever. I don't know how.
Then we added the resource sharing.
That's right, that's right.
So I think we should be good.
Yeah.
And so I'll make a motion that a premature discussion of both personnel and legal matters would cause the municipality to suffer substantial disadvantage.
Second.
Motion made by Matt and second by Glenn to establish the reason for the executive session is that personnel and legal matter. All those in favor, signify by the same line.
And I'll make a motion to enter into executive session for discussion of said personnel and legal matters.
Second.
Motion made by Matt and second by Jamie to enter into executive session to discuss said personnel or legal matters. All those in favor, signify by the same line. All right. What's the volume on something over there?
Janet, we'll note um.